Jordan, would you start us off with a roll call, please?
Please respond by stating President, Councilmember Ronane.
Present.
Foberg.
Present.
Lee Belt.
Present.
Ward.
Present.
Johnson.
Present.
E. Conger.
Present.
Nielsen.
Present.
Norv Strup.
Present.
Mayor Shawman.
Present. Please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance. First order of business, as always, is to approve this week's printed agenda. I do have a slight modification, given that we've got a few guests in here tonight that are here for a particular item. Item G is the purchase of the Presentation Sisters Southeast Nursing Building. I'd ask the council if we could move that to the first item of new business so that they, I know they have a bit of a dinner obligation to attend here this evening. Second. I've got a motion from Councilwoman Lee Belt and a second, Councilman Ward. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose nay. Motion carries. Second item of business is to approve the minutes from our previous meeting, which took place two weeks ago on June 23rd. We'll take a motion to approve those minutes.
Motion to approve.
Motion, E. Conger, second, and obstru-- anyone have anything to discuss as it relates to any of those minutes? Anything to improve? All right, then we will take a motion, our second in the books on that. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries. No one was here to speak at our open forum, so we will skip ahead to our consent calendar item, where we've got quite a lot of routine city business. Remember, you can always abstain from a portion, a single item or two. If necessary, I would take a motion to approve our consent calendar. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion, Ward. Second, Lee Belt. Anyone with anything to discuss on any of these items before we take the vote on all?
I do have an abstention. And I would abstain on item N.
N as in Nancy?
Yeah, N as in Nancy.
All right.
I will as well.
All right. Jordan, can you make note of those abstentions? Councilman Ronane, Councilwoman Foberg, N as in Nancy on the consent calendar. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay.
I vote aye, or I vote aye on all items except N, as I think does Councilwoman Foberg.
Yes.
Fair enough. That has been noted. You should be in clear. No old business, since it had been a couple of weeks since our last meeting. We'll move ahead to our adjusted item, which was G. It's possible approval of a purchase agreement for the city to acquire the Presentation Sisters, former Presentation College Southeast Nursing Building. And I will lead that up unless you have a few things to start with there, Robin? All right, so many of you have been in the loop. I know we've got a couple of new council members that have kind of come late to this party, but Presentation College formerly closed a couple of years ago. The city has been working with them pretty consistently from that time forward to make sure that, you know, we've got a good understanding of the use of the property and that we can guide along their vision as far as what those buildings, future homes, would consist of. We've had great success with the Dome and the Strode Center being used by our Parks and Rec Department. And then, of course, we've got quite a lot of housing that will be coming from that closed facilities up there. This time through, we were talking about the Southeast Nursing Building. It is the most modern of the educational facilities in the southeast part of campus, closest to Main Street. It's about 20,000 square feet, and it dovetails nicely into its intended purpose of education. We've had numerous conversations with Southeast Tech out of Sioux Falls about teaching courses up here. That is an ongoing discussion. I know that I've brought to you guys in the past a few different ideas for it, and here we see our new Parks and Rec Director, Matt Braun, who took a look at the facility last week in case that we are not able to secure Southeast Tech coming to Aberdeen. An additional potential use for the facility would be the Senior Center, which is kind of busting at the seams, and they're currently taking a look at adding on to their existing facility. And then finally, we've had additional conversations about additional uses that the city could potentially utilize this space for, but the primary focus of the facility would be to get education back up into that campus area. So we'll continue to work very hard on that, and graciously, the Sisters have given us a very good deal on the building. There are a few items to be considered. One of them was full of asbestos, but that's been taken care of, so there will have to be new flooring put into the building. That was in the documentation that I provided to you guys all earlier, as well as HVAC. The heating was provided through steam from the motherhouse building next door. That connection will be terminated, and boilers will have to be added to the building, which was also part of our original agreement with these guys to take care of prior to us legally taking possession of the building. So all of those things have been kind of factored into the purchase, and I think we've come to an arrangement which is very favorable for the city and for our efforts to continue to recruit educational opportunities for that space. So we've got a purchase agreement. Ron has been working very hard with their legal counsel to make sure that everyone is happy. Without that, it's turned out. Ron, anything to add?
No, just wanted to make sure that the public and the council are aware that of the HVAC system requirement, that is part of a condition of sale. So that is going to be initially placed on, and then I think the city will be involved in the oversight and management of that, but that is ultimately a responsibility of the Sisters as part of the sale. Also, there is a restriction for use of the property north of the building as a educational green space, so that provision has been included in there. Rather than that, it is a standard purchase agreement, and staff recommends approval.
And just to clarify, on education or green space, it could be continued to be operated as a beautiful outdoor lawn area, which we'll tend to, or it could be used for educational expansion, should everything go well for our efforts with education.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
I've got a motion from Councilman Ronane and a second from Councilwoman Foberg. Anything to clarify or discuss? Are any questions, anyone?
Other than the HVAC, what's the condition of the building? I guess I've spent quite some time since I've been through there.
Overall, it's very good. We will have, of course, some cosmetic updates to make, primarily the flooring. I would say, from a structural standpoint, we're really--
Yes, structurally, it's fine. You know, is it outdated? If we have someone new coming in, are we going to have to make renovations to it?
You know, for the sake of the use, of course, it'll have to be reconfigured to fit the needs of additional use. You know, our initial conversations with Southeast involved nursing education, which it was entirely built for and intended for, and those spaces have been renovated within the last 12 years, I believe it was, so they're in amazing shape. And a lot of the spaces around the perimeter of the facility are offices that were used right up until the end. So I would say, from a standpoint of condition, it's in very good condition. A person might have an opinion about wall swatches or whatnot, but flooring is really the only thing that we'll need to do to make it ready to go.
Do we have estimates on flooring at this time?
We don't.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I wanted to compliment you on your work with this, and also Amber and Robin and the Sisters. And it's a big vision, and you only get one opportunity to figure out the future of the Presentation Campus, and the Sisters have been very measured and thoughtful about the fit and what to create in that space. And I just appreciate, again, everything they've done for our community over more than a century, and I think that the position of continuing to make sure that this area of campus is used for the public good and that the city is a good fit, because what we do is for the public good. I appreciate the trust they're putting in the city to give us a very good deal on building and on land and trusting us that we will use it for the public good. I think it shows a tight relationship that was developed over time. And I just compliment everybody involved.
Yeah, I would totally echo those sentiments and say that it's been a very wonderful working relationship with the Sisters. They have been very accommodating, and I think our shared mission is really going to be fulfilled in one way, shape, or form. We're going to work hard on our end to make sure that the facility gets put to good use, good continued use, so that we can continue to march forward and serve the public. Anything else before we take a vote? Oh, Sister Mary? Yeah, would you, if you'd make your way to the podium, just make sure there's a little green light that's on that microphone. Make sure that thing is on.
I told them I wasn't going to, and now here I am.
Welcome. We're glad you're here.
I also a little bit want to echo what Erin just said, that it's always been the hope of the Sisters that in whatever way, shape, or form, that all people have access to the goods of the community. And so that's part of what was in the planning and the understanding with the Strode Center and the Dome, that lots of people would have access to that, and that's proven true. And I think this is another situation where people who might not have ability to access a typical four-year school can access the trade school, and we certainly need the trades. There's a great need for all kinds of people. And so I'm trusting that Southeast Tech will be a partner for you and that things will flourish in a way that, as you said, leaps beyond what our dreams would be at this point. So thank you for taking the risk, and it is an honor to carry on a legacy of the Sisters working with the city, and I just happen to be the next person in that link. So thank you so much. And it's always been a great pleasure to work with Mayor Travis. We have quite the conversations when we get together, so whether it's pickup to pickup or whatever it might be, but we're in it. So thank you again.
Thank you very much, Sister Mary. It was good to see you. Appreciate your input on all of this. Jordan, would you give us a roll call vote, please?
Mayor, could I ask you to describe the funding source?
Oh, that's a good point. So what I'm proposing, and I guess that was as good of a time as any, you know, if we go back to the genesis a little bit of the excess funds that we have available to our promotional funds. Several years ago, we ran a budgetary shortfall in our promotion funds. You know, we borrowed money against our general funds to make up the difference. The primary factor at hand was the lower-than-expected commerce due to the COVID. And we made good on all of our obligations to our city partners at that point, but it did bring to light the amount of, you know, responsible attitude of having a little bit of an excess of funds on hand and to be a little bit more conservative with those funding numbers. And so we adjusted the way that we calculated that. We took a little bit more of a conservative approach for the next couple of years. We were able to pay back that deficiency, and then also, we wound up with quite a bit of excess. And so a year ago, we sat down and had a discussion as a council about what to do, how big to allow that fund to get to. And right now, we have about $500,000 or $600,000 in that fund, and which far exceeds the amount that we need to have and should have for that fund. The express purpose of the promotional fund is obviously marketing the city, but also, we've designated the need to do capital projects, and we've contributed to things like Safe Harbors Capital Campaign, as well as the Boys and Girls Club, as well as the YMCA and the YDC. So I think this missionally fits right in with the capital campaign, and honestly, we get the benefit of being the beneficiaries for once of those capital efforts. And so my recommendation and my thought would be, why not, we're forced, we've created a situation in which we're forced to pay down that fund, why not use it for this, so that we can roll the dice, take a gamble on technical education, and then we've also got other needs for it from a city standpoint, should we not be able to make good on that effort? So that's where I would recommend that we get that from. How does the council feel?
I personally thought that was where the funds were coming from. I thought we'd made that decision.
Right. Yeah, we've definitely talked about it. So, you know, I mean, with a couple of new members, I know that there's probably weren't quite as familiar with the situation, so I thought I would give you the long, drawn-out version of why that we've got some money there to play with. You bet. Glad you're here, Chad.
And Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Just to make sure I'm understanding, so is it, would it be pulling funds in away from the promo fund of other area nonprofits and groups that they can request from a pool from? Am I understanding that, or is it separate from the actual promo funds that will have requests incoming for?
It'll be separate, and the reason for it is we've just run a little leaner in the last few years, and we didn't increase the amount by the amount that we thought that we could potentially get, and the funding sources performed better than we thought. So we wound up with several years of positive numbers that basically have just been sitting in a bank account. That number got to be a pretty big number, and so Jordan brought to the council a year ago the idea that, hey, we shouldn't have a gigantic reserve fund. Right now, it's 50% of the annual expense. That's too much to have on hand. You know, we ought to responsibly use this in a way that benefits the community, and I think that it just so happened to align time-wise with this great project. So why not use it? It'll not affect those partners that need the money to market us, that I think do a good job of doing so, and we can continue to benefit their efforts the way that we have in the past.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, David.
Jordan, is there another pot of money that we could potentially use instead of the promotion fund?
There could be a variety of funding sources, if so desired. General fund reserves, which would be derived from first and second penny sales tax. Less so in the special sales tax fund. We've kind of pulled funds recently from there for other projects. And then CARES reserves fund would be another option within the general fund.
Okay. I would prefer to use whatever fund Jordan recommends after, like, what he just listed, whichever fund he feels more comfortable taking that from, because I think the promotion fund should be, I know we've used it in the past, but I think it should be used for refilling the fund. And yeah, people might come to Aberdeen as visitors and go out to eat and whatever, if they're taking classes or whatever, but I really think the promotion fund should be for organizations that market the city of Aberdeen, that people spend money and then put more money into that fund to do it all over again, and it's a continuous circle. So, and looking at the agenda packet, it says funding will come from the city reserves, which I thought it was coming from the city reserves, how it's worded there, but I mean, it's up to the rest of you, but I would prefer it not come from a promotion fund, just because of the reasons I said. So I don't know if anybody else agrees with that or not, but--
If that's a motion, I would second that.
Sure. What fund, Jordan, do you feel like would be the better reserve fund?
Respectfully, I would defer to the council to determine the funding source for this purchase.
Okay. I'll say the city reserve fund.
Well, I mean, this is a city reserve fund, and, well, but, yeah. You know, I'm going to oppose that motion. I mean, this is what we have used promotion funds for years. We have money, we, there are a few things that bring things to our community and help our community, more than education. We have funded expansion at Northern State College using promotional funds. We have, we've used these funds for daycare, for other purposes. Again, as long as we can promote the city, help people learn, help people go to work, help people build our community, that is consistent with the promotional fund purposes. And I would utter rejection of the motion to use alternate funds.
And I would like to add, too, that this is kind of a one-time-use thing. It's, you know, I mean, it's, we've continued to support the efforts of those groups. We definitely all see the value in those groups. You know, I mean, Rob mentioned that we have supported education in the past. You know, we currently spend $180,000 out of that fund each year for Northern State University. This won't impact those funds in any way, shape, or form. We're just the beneficiaries of having a couple of good years strung together where we had an excess. So rather than shoveling a tremendous amount of excess into any one of those buckets, why not keep them, you know, the way that they've been with slight gains each year? And use this for a material gain that the city can have indefinitely.
I'm well aware that it's been, the promotion fund has been used for those other purposes, and I just don't agree with it. I didn't agree with it before I was on the city council, and a lot of those decisions were made before I was on the city council. And I just don't think that we should pay for this building with the promotions fund, because it should go to, like, the CBB or Downtown Association, or, and I realize it's one-time money, but I just, I just feel like it should come from a different fund.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, councilman.
Can I ask a point of clarification to Jordan? I mean, how fungible is that money? Can it be moved from one place to another? Does that reserve have to stay in the promotional fund? How does that work?
To answer the question, I simply wasn't certain where to cut the check from when it identifies the funding source as a reserve. We have reserves within each fund. We would likely expend this cash out of the promotion fund. So by asking, I was simply asking where to cut the check from. So we can spend it from the promo fund for this purpose, but like I said, I just need to know where to code the bill to.
I guess that question, sorry, can I follow up?
Please.
The question I have is, could the council ever vote to move the reserve of promotional funds to another fund?
I would have to look into the reserve policy that we passed this year, but I think it would be the intent and the desire of the council to use it for what's described within SCL and our ordinance.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilman Chad.
Question, if we use promotional funds to purchase this and it falls through with whatever educational use, say we use it for a community center or a senior center.
Sure.
Does that create any issues, being that we took the funds out of a promotional thing and now we're keeping it as a city property?
I don't think so, because we've dedicated promotional funds to Wiley Park, as well as to the Dome and Strode Center.
Softball fields?
Softball fields.
Sounds like this would be a good spot for it.
Yeah. So just to make, so the motion that we've got is to not essentially pull the funds from the promotional fund and to find another funding source elsewhere within city funds. So we've got a motion. That's Councilman Knobstrap. We've got a second, Councilman Ward. Just to reclarify, this would be to not use the excess funds that we've got on hand to pay for the, for this facility. So Jordan, would you give us a roll call vote on that, on that motion?
Councilmember Ronane.
Well, I want to make sure how I vote on this. So if I don't want to adopt--
So a vote no would be to use the promotional funds for this, or the excess promotional funds? A vote yes would be to find the source elsewhere.
And if I may, we're treating this as an amendment, essentially, to the original motion. So we'll resolve this first, and then depending on that, we'll go to the original motion.
No.
Foberg?
No.
Lee Belt?
No.
Ward?
No.
Johnson?
No.
E. Conger?
No.
Nielsen?
No.
Norv Strup?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
No. The motion, amendment motion is defeated. Let's take a motion, or we've got our motion and our second on the approval of the purchase agreement itself. Jordan, would you give us a roll call vote on that, then, please?
Councilmember Norv Strup?
Aye.
Nielsen?
Aye.
E. Conger?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Lee Belt?
Aye.
Foberg?
Aye.
Ronane?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
Aye. Motion carries. So we are making it official. Sisters, we will get you a signed document. We appreciate you joining us. Have a great supper, wherever your appointment finds you. But it's been a pleasure to work with you guys.
Thank you very much.
All right, so our next item of new business is to elect a deputy mayor. So the process for this will be, if someone has their eye on a deputy mayor candidate, they need to be a member of the council. They can nominate that person. They get a second. Any nominations, we'll start with a round of nominations, and then we can just do a vote on those people. And the person with the most votes can become the deputy mayor. Should I die in a plane wreck or get this position? This will be very pertinent. Short of that, I can make most of the meeting, so it's, it won't be the busiest of all positions. Does anyone, would anyone care to nominate a deputy mayor? I'll nominate Alan Johnson. Okay, any other nominations?
I nominate Rob Ronane.
Second. Any further nominations? All right, Jordan, would you be able to run down the room and then just, and just name each council member, and then we'll just figure out who they were voting for? Or should we do a vote for each one separately?
Ron, how would you like to handle that?
Mr. Mayor, we have these two nominations. Rather than vote on each of them separately, why not just have each council member name the person that they would--
Yeah, that's what I was kind of hoping for. So, Jordan, if you just run through the list of our council members.
Do they have to accept their nominations?
No.
Okay.
Absolutely not.
They have to go to the 911 Communications Council meetings with me, is what they've got to do, so. Jordan, would you run through a roll call, and then we'll tally up the votes for each. Johnson versus Ronane.
Councilmember Ronane.
Johnson.
Foberg.
Whoever wants it. Do you want it, Rob? Ronane.
Councilmember Lee Belt?
Ronane.
Ward?
Johnson.
Johnson?
Johnson.
E. Conger?
Johnson.
Nielsen?
Ronane.
Norv Strup?
Johnson.
Mayor Shawman?
Well, I tell you what, it's going to Johnson anyways, so I'll give Johnson my vote. Congratulations. Deputy Mayor Johnson, another year in office. So we need a, do we need a motion and a second to approve that, then?
Yeah, you can just, you can just call for the election of Johnson as a deputy mayor.
Okay, I take a motion to formalize this election with Councilman Alan Johnson being deputy mayor.
I'll move that.
Motion, Ronane, second. Knobstrap, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries. All right, so now we have-- Oppose nay. Motion carries. All right, so now we have, next is the assignment of liaisons to the various city boards and designated representatives for other boards and commissions. Nine-one-one communication call center will be myself and Johnson once again. Um, I've got, uh, I've got, what I'll do is I'll run down them and I'll identify who was in those positions before. And then we can, uh, we can see if we can find some volunteers and if anyone would like to adjust their current positions and then we will find out where the new folks fall in. So, currently I show airport board as Councilman Johnson. I show the bid one, which is the Downtown Alliance or Association as Langer and Foberg. I show bid two, which is the Hotel Alliance as Knobstrap and Reinbold. I show the Convention and Visitors Bureau as Langer and Knobstrap. The library as Councilman Ronane, and then Parks, Rec, and Forestry as Ward and Lee Belt. So, um, Johnson, are you still comfortable with your airport board or would you prefer to, uh, to explore other options?
I'm comfortable there.
All right. Um, so then if we go down to the library, since that's a lone member, Ronane, would you prefer to stay on that board or would you prefer to?
I think I'd prefer to stay there.
Okay.
Only about fifteen years old.
And then I've got, uh, Lee Belt and Ward as Parks and Rec. I've seen both of you guys at a lot of their activities, so I imagine you guys are enjoying it. Would you, do you prefer to stay in those?
Yes.
Positions, okay.
Can I speak for you?
Okay, you're both not, I got it, I got it. So the, um, it, I don't think it hurts to have more than one. So if either of you gentlemen would care to be on the airport board or the library board, you could be an additional member. Essentially, most of these groups meet on a monthly basis and, um, and then the responsibility of the liaison would be to attend those meetings and their events and so forth and to kind of act as a conduit to the council to make sure that people on their boards understood our stance on things and, and vice versa. And, uh, and that we had a clear line of communication. Um, so we've got Foberg and Langer to the Downtown Association. Aaron, are you interested in staying on that one?
I do like that one, yeah.
Okay.
I like them all, but I'll stay.
Would one of the two of you care to be on the Downtown Association, Airport Board, Library, C V B, or Hotel Alliance? Or multiple, for that matter.
Do you have anyone to do the C V B right now?
The C V B is, uh, Norvstrup.
I, I would be willing to give up either the C V B or the Hotel Alliance.
Okay, yeah, there's a lot of similar territory there.
I would like to learn more about other boards, so.
Have you got the list in front of you handy?
Yep, I do.
What do you prefer? David?
Um, would, did you say the airport board?
Yeah, well, we have one member, uh, attending there currently. We could easily have two.
Yeah, maybe that.
Okay, and then that is in place of the Hotel Alliance.
Sure.
He's on, oh, bid two, yeah.
I'm on the Hotel Alliance, C V B, right now, which.
It's a lot of overlap.
You are, you're really.
I could almost do Casey's speech.
So, is there a second one that you'd prefer to explore as well? Or would you stay on one of the C V B or the Hotel Alliance?
I can stay on the C V B.
Okay. All right, so then, uh, Councilman Nilson, looking at the list that we've got there, do you have any questions about what any of these would entail?
No, I can hop on the hotel one, that's fine.
Okay. They usually feed you at that one, don't they, even?
They do, feed you on that one.
There you go, that'll be a good one. And, uh, Councilman E Konger?
I'm perfectly comfortable to fill in wherever's, whatever's left over, wherever you need to.
Well, I tell you what, we've got one person in each position at least, so why don't you take a look at the list and see if there's one or more that you'd be interested in, uh.
The bid, I guess the, the bid one and, uh.
Bid one?
Yeah, the bid one would probably be good.
Okay, bid one is the Downtown Association, so I know that they've got a, quite an active crew and they do a lot of events. So that one should be interesting, to say the least. All right, um, anyone would additionally like to serve on the C V B board? No pressure.
I'd be open to that. Not sure if that's a conflict at all. They're a tenant of my employer.
How much of the rent do you personally pocket?
I don't benefit off any of it.
I would say you'd be in good shape. Is that a fair statement?
I think it might be better if you did not serve on the C V B.
I'm trying, guys, I'm trying.
I get you, I.
How long is that meeting?
It's usually an hour.
Is it at lunch? And you're on it? You probably don't need me then, if David's.
They don't, they don't. In fact, we're in a comfortable position. We had a few people that had made volunteer, uh, options last time. So I'm gonna run down the list of what I've got and then we can, uh, take a motion to codify all of these things. So I've got myself and Johnson, nine-eleven communications, got Knobstrap and Johnson Airport. I've got E Konger, Foberg downtown. I've got Nilson for the hotel. I've got Knobstrap for C V B. Ronane for the library. Ward and Lee Belt for Parks and Rec. Does that sound correct to everybody? I take a motion to, uh, make that official.
Second.
Got a motion from Knobstrap, second from Nilson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries. So we've got some, three reappointments to our library board of trustees. This takes place, uh, preemptively, uh, July first for three-year terms. It's Troy McQuillan, Peter Ramey, and Lynn Clunt, who are already currently serving on those positions. Just a matter of keeping them on board, coming to meetings. Take a motion to approve those.
Move to approve those.
Second.
Okay, Lee Belt is the motion. Ward is the second. Anyone have anything to say before we take our vote? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries. Next, I've got a Parks and Rec board, uh, appointment. It's Adam Buckhouse. Um, this would be a five-year term ending in twenty thirty.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion, Ward, second, Nilson. Anyone have anything to share?
Second.
Oh, second, E Konger, sorry about that. You guys are starting to sound a little bit the same over there. Uh, make note of that for me. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose nay. Motion carries. Next, we've got the possible approval to allocate money to the twenty-twenty-six budget to cover the local share of a propane bus. Rich, you're here to tell us about a propane bus.
Yes.
Bus of the future.
So, uh, this, this one kinda came up after we had done our budget meeting. Um, it's gonna be kind of a quick turnaround, but, um, we were offered the opportunity to apply for this bus, uh, this, this, uh, propane bus. And the local share of that, we're thinking is probably gonna be somewhere around twenty-five to thirty thousand dollar, um, commitment by the city. Before we decided to apply for that grant, uh, I had Ryan call around just to make sure that there was, uh, a place that we could refuel because we don't have a propane, uh, refuel facility over at Rideline. So, um, we're not worried about that now, so, um. We need to get this letter sent in by the fourteenth, so next Monday. So I'm asking the council if they would consider, um, the city commitment of thirty thousand dollars or less to cover the cost share of that propane bus.
Oh, go ahead, Ron.
Are you budgeted for this?
No, this came up after Robin and Jordan and I met.
Where do we pay for this, Jordan?
Th- this is early enough, we can build it into our twenty-six budget proposal, but it's not late enough where we.
And I'm gonna move to approve.
Motion, Ronane, second, Knobstrap. So what's the benefit of propane versus the rest of them are diesel and gas or just gas?
Actually, we've been transitioning away from diesel as well. Um, we've got two diesel buses left and those are the larger ones. Um, the advantage to propane is, um, less fuel cost.
And where can you refuel them at?
Performance oil.
Okay, and that's west of town?
Correct.
Do you have to go onsite?
We would have to go onsite to refuel.
Better, just better economy of.
Correct, better economy.
And then the twenty-four passenger bus, we're gonna need a C D L driver. How are we feeling about staffing for something like that?
No, we've already got, you, we've got C D L drivers.
We're in good shape.
Yeah, uh, all of our full-time drivers are C D L holding drivers, so we've got five plus Ryan. Uh, Ryan is the.
Manager, right.
Coordinator, yep.
Good guy, all around. We like him.
Rich, is this an additional bus or is this replacing something that's?
Eventually, it'll be replacing us. Um, we're supposed to have.
When you say eventually, what's the timeframe on that? I mean, i- if we don't need this for five years, we don't need to sit on it.
It would be within a couple of years, yep. So we're supposed to, the, the recommended, um, overage or spares, spare to, uh, ratio would be twenty percent. But we're currently at about seventeen percent on our spare bus ratio. What that means is if we have a bus go down, do we have another bus we can pull out of the barn and send out on the road?
Will this be the last of acquisition? I know we've, we've acquired a number of the, these new buses here pretty recently.
The twenty-four passenger will be the last one for this year, yes.
All right, any other questions from the council? We've got our motion and our second. Jordan, would you give us a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Norvstrup?
Aye.
Nilson?
Aye.
E Konger?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Lee Belt?
Aye.
Foberg?
Aye.
Ronane?
Aye.
Mayor Shawnaman?
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, Rich. Appreciate you joining us here tonight.
Thank you, Council.
Next is the ratification of appointments of Jeff Mitchell and Justin Scott.
If I may, Mayor, did we, did we approve both motions or do you have a, do you have to approve the twenty-four passenger bus?
Oh.
Seventy and seven up.
Sorry about that. Got ahead of, got ahead of myself with the line of questioning then.
I moved to approve seven up.
Second. Sounds good. We've got a motion from Councilwoman Foberg and a second, Councilman Ward. Any further discussion as it relates to that, uh, budgetary expense and the payment? Jordan, would you give us a roll call vote on that second item? Sorry about that.
Councilmember Ronane?
Aye.
Foberg?
Aye.
Lee Belt?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
E Konger?
Aye.
Nilson?
Aye.
Norvstrup?
Aye.
Mayor Shawnaman?
Aye, motion carries. Next, appointments of Jeff Mitchell and Justin Scott to the Board of Ethics. Those guys have met a little bit more frequently in the last couple of years than they have in the past, but we've had some turnover due to the length of time that some of the previous members have been on the board and we were in need of a couple of new folks and these ones were willing to do it. So, um, I would take a motion if someone was so inclined to approve both, uh, Justin and Jeff to this board.
Move to.
Move to approve.
I'll second that.
Motion, Ward, second, Lee Belt. Any question on either of these applicants?
Mr. Mayor, not on these applicants, but can Ron remind us who will still be on there with them?
Sure.
Heidi Fiedler and?
It'll be Heidi Fiedler, Reverend Chuck Hogle, and Professor John Schaff are, are the remaining members on that board. So, wonderful board, strong board.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose nay. Motion carries. Next is a possible approval of an encroachment license for lighting and planting islands. Ron, what have you got?
Mayor Shawnaman, the, uh, license agreement is a standard, uh, form that we use for our encroachments into right-of-way by private property owners. And this, this is kind of a carryover from the, um, planning of the Presentation Heights Apartments. And, uh, what this will do is we'll give them permission to maintain the lighting fixtures and the planting islands that are out into the right-of-way as it was platted. And the photos attached and the drawing attached shows that encroachment. And, uh, this one will be, is, is, uh, formatted so that it can be recorded, but, uh, staff would recommend approval of the request.
And just to clarify, this, we're just essentially allowing them to change the lettering and facing on the existing sign that exists up there?
This is, this is not signage. This is actually on the, what would be the north side of the lot for Presentation Heights Apartments. And it just allows them to, uh, maintain the, the lighting fixtures that they have there. There, you can see from the aerial view, uh, better that there are several lighting fixtures that are, that are situated into, into, actually into the right-of-way, as are those, uh, parking lot, planting islands.
Oh, hey, thanks for joining us. You gotta.
Do we have a motion on this yet? Mr. Mayor, I don't think we have a motion on this one yet.
With us?
I don't think we have a motion to consider this one.
We don't, no. But if you've been following the rest of this, man, we're kinda just going crazy. Move to approve. Got a motion from Councilman Ward, second from Councilman Knobstrap. All right, now, please. Sure, the little green light is on, so, um, lights in the right.
I'm Joan Franken with Pacello Companies and we represent Presentation Heights Limited Partnership. Um, so when we moved to close on, on the property, um, this property or the apartment building was platted separately before it was listed for sale. It was done by the city. So, um, if you have the, the rendering in front of you or the aerial, excuse me, it was platted through the middle of those medians that have trees and some light poles on the north side of the property. So this came up from our attorneys and everybody. Um, basically, they let us, um, let, um, Presentation Heights Limited Partnership buy the building the end of April, but then when we moved to closing on the construction loan in our limited partnership, we have several more attorneys involved in this. And so, um, we needed this clarified through the city and whatever process that was. So this licensing agreement came out of that, but it was nothing that, we intentionally did, this is how it was platted and before it was even listed for sale. So we're just here to, I'm, I'm here to answer any questions that you may have on the property in general.
Tidy a bit of an oversight on our part. Thank you for joining us, Joan. Um, any questions for her from the council?
It makes sense.
Yeah, no, it certainly seems like it'll be a positive and not a negative. Jordan, would you give us a roll call vote, please?
Norvstrup?
Aye.
Nilson?
Aye.
E Konger?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Lee Belt?
Aye.
Foberg?
Aye.
Ronane?
Aye.
Mayor Shawnaman?
Aye, motion carries. Thanks for joining us, Joan. Relatively painless once we got to it. Next, we've got Brett Newton out there. Thanks for joining us, Brett. This would be a possible approval of a request by Brett Newton for an indefinite extension to a construction side, or constructing a sidewalk on his property, which is located at twenty-two, twenty-five North Roosevelt Street.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilman.
I need to recuse myself from this one.
All right, I think that's the case for Councilman Ronane as well.
Thank you, Mayor.
Um, so Jordan, would you make note of those, uh, refusals? And, let's see, Ron, are you gonna walk us through?
Sure.
Where we're at with this thing?
I can do that.
Would you?
The council has before to request by the property owner to grant an indefinite extension on constructing the sidewalk. And this council, several years ago, had passed a, essentially a missing links, uh, sidewalk requirement. It's been, the actual, uh, requirement has been there for many years on new construction. And, uh, forty-six dash one-twenty-seven requires the construction of a sidewalk on this property at twenty-two, twenty-five North Roosevelt Street. There is a provision at forty-six dash one-twenty-eight by which an extension to construct that sidewalk can be requested. This goes beyond the authority of the city engineer to grant, so the property owner is before the, uh, council on that request for an indefinite extension. I did provide with the, uh, council agenda memo, the, the property owner's request in a letter form. It is June twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five, and so you know that's the operative date that we'll be using if there is in fact an extension granted. And, uh, with that, uh, there's also an aerial view of the lot at twenty-two, twenty-five North Roosevelt. And then some photos from the property owner, uh, himself, showing that there are no adjoining sidewalks on either the north or the south side of this property located on the west side of Roosevelt. Um, I would also point out that there is curb and gutter on that, uh, but there is no sidewalk on the west side of Roosevelt. Essentially from, I wanna say from Melgarde almost, all the way up to Twenty-Fourth Avenue. There is a, I'm sorry, there is a bike path that entire length.
On the east.
On the east side. But, and I'll recorrect myself here, on the north, on the west side, that area where this property is, there is no sidewalk on the west side of the road. You have, you have before you the request by Mr. Newton in writing and comprehensive. And I don't have anything to add to that, but if the council does decide to grant an indefinite extension, then the ordinance is clear that that would need to be entered in the minutes and we could actually record that. Because if the property is sold after five years, then that goes away by ordinance as well. So all that language will be reflected in the minutes if the council approves an indefinite extension. The council, of course, can approve any extension less than indefinite for a definite period of time. But I just wanted to make sure that the council is aware that these are the considerations. The determination, of course, to construct sidewalks is intended to promote the safe passage of pedestrians. And the court or the council would take into account the particular location, what's surrounding and to determine whether it is necessary that we have that extension or that we have that sidewalk on this particular property at this time.
Well, I wanna just start by saying that I appreciate that we've got this capability these days because I remember a while back when a couple of different property owners expressed their grievances about having to build sidewalks that were essentially not being used because they were surrounded by grass on either side and there was perfectly good wide sidewalks maintained by the city directly across the road that were getting a fair amount of use. And so us having the ability to take these factors into consideration, I think, is a positive for the folks that are, that have that situation come up from time to time. So anyone on the council have care to make a motion for an indefinite extension?
Move to approve.
I'll second that.
Oh, too late, Councilwoman.
I'll third it.
Ward and motion Ward, second Nobstrip. Any discussion? I think Ron did a good job of laying this out. There's no sidewalks north and or south of this property. So it would essentially be kind of a landlocked sidewalk directly across the street from a very nice and used bicycle trail. And so Ron, explain to us if Brett were to sell this property, what becomes of it to the next owner?
If the property is sold, then the extension terminates and that person would then have to come in and request either another indefinite extension or get notice from us that it has to install a sidewalk.
Okay.
And that's great, but who, like, who's monitoring if this is sold or not?
That was you. Remember, we voted on that last round.
So.
Put that on your calendar.
So the dirty secret here is that we're not monitoring that. We're not gonna follow up on that. If it comes onto our radar in some other fashion, then we would notify the property owner at that time. But there's no system in place for us to catch this and go after the next person.
Sure.
I will say, and I'm gonna add this, because this was a particularly thoughtful letter of request in that when the council is faced with something that's put together as nicely and actually succinctly because it discussed only relevant matters. If the council is inclined to grant this indefinite extension, future property owners should look at this and consider that when they're making that request as well.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Who is responsible if the sidewalk was there to displace the snow during the winter? What burden, who has the burden to keep it clean?
The property.
The property owner.
That would be.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And that is not the case across the street where the city treats it as a bike trail?
Right. I think the, I think our Parks and Rec Department clears those.
Thanks, Matt. All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman.
I have another question.
Econger?
If we approve the. I guess if we approve this, then the, what is the mechanism? Can it, let's say the neighbors did build a sidewalk. Suddenly, there's a gap. What's the remedy to go back and redress that?
That can either be neighborhood initiated or city initiated, but there is a process to bring it back to the council. And if the council does find that it's necessary and convenient for pedestrian safety and other concerns like that, then we would conduct essentially a public hearing to give that property owner an opportunity to come in and either oppose or potentially support that. At that point, though, we would send out a notice that they have to construct the sidewalk. And if they don't, once that notice is in place and we have to construct it, then we can assess that cost of construction on the property.
And in this particular circumstance, I would say that's probably quite a long shot, given the fact we've gotten so far from any other sidewalks in the vicinity and not even any housing. And it works and some of those homes to the north have been established probably for decades without sidewalks.
So I would add, Mayor, while I was editorializing about how nicely done this is, this also identifies for the council the things that would make it so you should require the sidewalk be constructed. Walkability was a consideration and just the sheer distances involved here helped the property owner. There will be situations that come up where those distances are nearly as daunting and it's probable that that sidewalk should be constructed.
Yep, this one's pretty clear cut. Jordan, would you give us a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Lee Belt.
Oh, aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Johnson. Econger.
Aye.
Nilson.
Aye.
Norvstrup.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion carries. Thanks for joining us, Mr. Newton. Appreciate that. Sorry to make you wait. I thought about that after we rearranged the schedule a little bit earlier. Next, possible pay approval, pay request, title number two for ninety-six thousand six hundred thirty-five dollars and seventy-five cents to P C N for our Tenth Avenue Bridge Construction, crane construction out of Slaton, Minnesota. Stu, still haven't ripped it out yet, right?
Nope, should be starting next week.
Next week.
Their crane is onsite. They will finish up storm sewer work this week. That's taken them a little bit longer than they anticipated because I think every time they dug a hole, it rained and slowed them down. So, but we would recommend approving the payment to prom.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion, Ronane, second Ward. And that'll, any Dave in particular next week? I'm hoping to film that darn thing.
When I find out, I'll let you know.
Okay. We'll hold you to it. Stu, appreciate that. We've got a motion and our second. Jordan, would you give us a roll call vote?
Councilmember Norvstrup.
Aye.
Nilson.
Aye.
Econger.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Lee Belt.
Aye.
Foberg.
Aye.
Ronane.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion carries. Next, possible approval of the surplus of three drones in the inventory of the police department to be traded in for a single new drone. Chief McNeil, trading in drones.
Yeah, thank you. So we're looking at your permission to go ahead and surplus the three drones that we have in our inventory. These are out of warranty. There'll be future needs with software and we think that they've reached the longevity that we would want out of these. So we're asking you for permission to surplus the ones that I've listed here in our inventory for a trade. And that offsets basically the expense of the new drone we're asking to purchase. And so basically, the total trade value would be nine forty-two and the cost is nine twenty-two. So it pretty much offsets itself. I think it'd be a fair question if the public were to ask, you know, why do the police department have drones? That's a good question. We use them for a lot of applications. We use them in critical incidents, in emergency response, sometimes looking for missing people, documenting crime scenes and more. Sometimes we'll use these drones as a safety measure. When we have the legal authority then or a property and there's a necessity and a danger element within a property, we use the drone to go and assess the inside and determine if it's safe for officers to go in and complete the legal process. But they're a good product and, but probably just like everything, they had a lifespan. And the one that you would read there, that one had a crash. That one fell out of the sky for some type of programming issue. It wasn't necessarily our fault. So we're looking at these out of warranty and we'd like to upgrade into the new product.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion Ward, second Econger. How frequently are you guys using these drones? Is one of them gonna be enough then, Dave, if you're shuttering up three?
Yeah, so this would be a good question. I think we also have two additional ones in inventory right now, so that'd give us three total. One is a larger one that's used on the outside and we do have local partners. The South, or the Brown County Emergency Management also has one that we use. We use them probably once a month for training, but recently we had an incident in an apartment building where there was gunfire. And unfortunately, that bullet went into another apartment and we used the drone to enter into the suspect apartment as a safety measure and we're able to deescalate that and be safe with it. So that just happened not too long ago. That doesn't happen very often, but I'm really impressed on how safe it makes, you know, us and our officers in the field. Again, we do have missing children, missing persons, and we've used them before as well. So I think just like in any application and in many different fields, we're seeing more and more use of this technology. So thanks for the question.
Thank you. Chief, Jordan?
Councilmember Ronane.
Aye.
Foberg.
Aye.
Lee Belt.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Johnson. Econger.
Aye.
Nilson.
Aye.
Norvstrup.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion carries. Final agenda item that requires some consideration here tonight will be a review of claims and payroll. It is this week, of course, July seventh, but the pay period is from June fifteenth through the twenty-eighth as well as June twenty-sixth through July twelfth. I would take a motion to pay those bills.
Move to approve.
Motion, Ronane, second Nobstrip. Anyone have anything to contribute on this topic before we take the vote? Jordan?
Councilmember Norvstrup.
Aye.
Nilson.
Aye.
Econger.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ward.
Upstein.
Lee Belt.
Aye.
Foberg.
Aye.
Ronane.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion carries. Next is our city managers' report. Robin, have you got anything exciting going on?
Oh, all kinds of stuff here. Jordan and I are starting to work through the requests from the departments. We finished meeting with them, I believe, right before the last meeting or the day of the last meeting. And so he and I are gonna start going through and looking at areas of opportunities to adjust some things so that we can present you a balanced budget, which will be in under a month now. So the pressure's on for us to get that put together. The promo fund is now available for the public to start making their requests from. That was open and it's online on our webpage as of July first and I think it closes on August fourth.
And when you say public, you mean partner organizations?
Yes. Good catch, yes. I suppose anybody could apply, but it, a lot of it depends on how the council goes down that, yes. So then lastly, we do have several board meetings again this week and so it'll be a busy week. And last week, I did a five-year certificate for Catherine Malsum at the library. And Tom Dundon at the wastewater plant did his fifteen-year and had some, a couple really good conversations there. It's a lot of fun doing these. I've learned to embrace them, so some of these, some of these folks, frankly, you don't have the opportunity to meet with. And so it is, it is pretty cool to be able to have the opportunity to get to know them a little better and find out why people come to work for the city and why they like it. So it's a good thing. So that's all I had.
Thank you, Robin, and thank you to Tom and Catherine for those milestone achievements working for the city. Always appreciate our employees for putting in the time. Take a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So move.
Motion, Nilson, second from David Nobstrip over there. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nay, motion carries. We are.